To order, let the minute taker please take attendance.
Alderman Sizmarski, Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Okay, next approval of minutes from regular meeting February 9th, 2017.
So.
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next is a report and recommendation Potter Street beautification improvements. Mr. York, you want to say a few words?
Sure, thank you very much Alderman. The city opened bids on the 14th for the Potter Street beautification project. Seven companies submitted bids. They ranged from three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty cents to three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. One company came in under the engineer's estimated cost, and that was RW Dunhaman. That cost was actually, we only budgeted three hundred thousand, so the bid actually came in a little bit higher than our budgeted amount of three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty cents, but we would like to ask that the contract be approved for RW Dunhaman to proceed with doing the work along the right of ways, or reestablishing the right of ways along Potter Street.
Alderman Messina?
Did you guys have a chance to look at references?
They, we received our approval letter from Robinson, or excuse me, from HR Green. So they did the due diligence of the references and also the bid, checking the bids to make sure the bids were right. So, and RW Dunhaman worked on the safety improvement project with the consultants from HR Green. So they felt that with that, and they're coming in as low bidder, they provided with a recommendation.
Alderman Messina?
A follow-up on that Irving Park, Irving and Wooddale Road project, they finished on time, from what I understand, as committed?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Thanks.
Alderman Jacob?
I want to make a motion to approve the contract with RW Dunhaman. In the amount of three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty cents.
Not to exceed the amount?
Not to exceed.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
One item is this coming out of?
Mr. York?
This should be the general fund CIP for, for the Eastern Gateway Project, Eastern Gateway Project.
Why can't this come out of tourism?
I would have to defer.
Mr. Murmice?
Well, it was originally budgeted out of the general CIP. If you did take it out of tourism, you'd drain down the whole thing. And we have other expenses in tourism that are currently looking at being budgeted for, like the city signs and things like that.
I look at projects like this, I'm not, I knew, I know it needs to be done, but we still have projects for flooding in Ward Three. We have streets that need to be repaired still, and if a project like this should come forward, I think we should look at, in this, for beautification, it should come out of hotel tax, out of tourism. So I would like to look at this more carefully when we go forward on projects that, for beautification, that it comes out of hotel tax instead of the CIP, if possible, for, especially if we're looking for beautification.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
That passes. Next is Ward Two, Phase Four. Mr. York?
Thank you Chairperson. The Ward Two, Phase Four project was also opened on the 14th. Our bids were extremely, extremely good bids, ranging anywhere from a hundred, or eight hundred and seventy-four thousand to just short of 1.2 million. Engineer estimate was 1.135 million. We actually budgeted 1.4 million dollars due to costs from the first few projects from the year before that was over budget for our budget, or for initial budgetary estimate. So HR Green once again did the review of all the bids. Low bidder was K-5 Construction. So we are looking to move forward with a contract with K-5 at their bid amount, which was eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, eighty-two dollars and two cents.
I just have to say what a great job they do in Ward Two of keeping the budget down.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
In that response that you just said, I take it that the difference that we have, that we saved, we're budget 1.4 million, and it's not eight hundred thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, I take it we're going to look at other streets in Ward Two to get completed of the difference here, or work on, on projects of streets possibly from other areas?
Mr. Murmice?
It may sound like a broken record for those watching at home, but typically when we have, when we have projects, some projects come over budget in the CIP, some come in under, so we have to be careful throughout the course of the year not to get ahead of ourselves. So in the end, they usually end up equaling out. So if we were to go ahead and spend this excess money right now, and then other projects came over budget, then you'd probably be yelling at us for the projects coming in over budget.
Well, first I'll make a motion to approve the contract with K-5.
Second.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
In return of your spot, response that you just said, I just want to make sure that we're just not throwing this extra money into beautification of doing something else. I know, broken record.
Correct. Mayor, please.
Yeah, real quick Matt, and I was going to ask you before the meeting, and I didn't. We had an issue where the water, it's like a big, it was bubbling up from, coming from Addison, coming across RV, and it was just, and then there's a empty yard where we purchased a house a few years back. And it just, that, that was looked at, I take it right, and came up with some kind of.
Mr. York?
Yes, there's two components to that. One is, yes, it was looked at. Two is, it's a little bit larger of a problem than we originally thought it was going to be. So HR Green is getting some more data for us, but we didn't want to hold up the construction of the road and the ditches because whatever we do with that portion of the project really doesn't conflict with this part of the project. So we wanted to move forward with the, with the road portion of the project, and then any modifications we could make either in the field or as a subsequent project.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
That passes. Next is fiscal year 2018 CIP, street resurfacing. Mr. York?
Yes, once again, February 14th was a busy day for staff and our consultants. We opened bids for this project as well on that day. This project actually came in under budget as well at 294,000. We had nine construction companies. All nine did come in under the engineer estimate. We were extremely pleased with the pricing. Robinson did their due diligence and reviewed the bids in the bid tabs and the companies. And this company of RW Dunhaman was also selected for this project to do the, do the work for the resurfacing of the approximately 3,000 linear feet of street in town.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Matt, Jeff, either one. HR Green here. Is this, what are these numbers? I can't read them. What?
That's the HR Green bid spec.
Okay. You put this in my packet. Could you read that if I just gave you this?
Mr. Murmice?
I don't know, everybody probably has different vision. I bet you I can read it, but that's why on the iPad you can zoom in.
You know my iPad doesn't work half the time. We gone through that.
But we just got that thing fixed.
It's not fixed.
Make a motion, get a magnifying glass?
But, thanks. We've talked about this before, about making this larger. Could anyone read this? Somebody, you got, you got your glasses on, on, on page.
Bring it a little closer, I may be able to see it.
On page thirteen. Everyone got that.
272,407 dollars.
But, yeah, that's the next page, but I like to read this other stuff too.
Okay, let's circle back to the subject matter.
Okay, so could we make this, again, I asked for it, can we make it larger next time? Yeah, there is a motion.
No, this. Not on this one. Alderman Messina?
So I should probably have a few of the people cover their ears at the dais when I ask this, but in the spirit of asking, so we're under budget on a lot of these street resurfacing projects. Are there certain conditions that are happening that these are all falling so far under budget? And would it make sense, or could we look and see if HR Green would say, you know what, this is, maybe it's materials really low, labor is really cheap, maybe we push forward some of those other streets that maybe we have budgeted for next fiscal year, move those forward?
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'll be more than happy to answer that question. The reason why they're coming out lower is because we're going out quicker with bids. I mean, before we used to sit here and release bids, go out for bids, we decided at this council, before you guys came on board, to get ahead. And if I am mistaken, we are still engineering one street ahead, so in case, are we not doing that anymore?
Mr. Murmice?
Well, I would just note that this is probably a unique circumstance where we have RW Dunhaman in town wrapping up the intersection project. While it's, you know, it's substantially complete, but they're wrapping up in the spring, and they're in town, and then they're able to bid on both Potter Street and the street resurfacing program, all in town, which abnormally will lower the price, so it may be a unique circumstance. We might not see that again.
Disregard.
Okay, could we, could I finish my question?
Sure, it was a two-parted?
Yes, it was, I'm sorry. My question is, and they gave me a look that we aren't doing anymore. I thought we decided go off a bid, I mean, got the contract rolling on this one, and we try and stay ahead of the ballgame that the next street that was in line was supposed to go off for engineer. I thought we talked about that before, so we are not doing that anymore?
Mr. York?
Yes, the way it goes is that we can't really go out for the next engineering project that's designed in the FY18 capital improvement plan until the FY18 capital improvement plan is approved. It hasn't been approved yet, so I can't send the FY18 budget, or design projects out for RFP until that gets, that gets decided. So in May, so what it's, what we're doing is, and we're going out, and we'll go out in May for RFP for design, we'll have them design it in the spring, or in the summer, and then in the fall button it up and bid it in the winter, so we're ready to go because this project really shouldn't start until May 1st anyway. That's how the budget cycle works.
Mayor, please.
Basically, what we, we discussed many years ago, we had the in-house engineer at the time, and so we're building this road now, and we, we were trying to get another project engineered in the hopper, ready to bid early. And we're kind of there, but I think we were trying to get it in, if bids came in cheap, you know, tried to get in another project. But I understand, but it's pretty close to right there. So that's why here we're bidding earlier, bidding, so right now it's February. Normally, we're going out to bid the end of March, mid-April.
Because with a.
So we're kind of doing it.
Yeah, with a normal project, if you're, if you would bid and design and build in the same year, that's when you come in with a problem. That now that we've, we designed a year early, we have the ability to kick it off right at May 1st with the new budget year. That's how we get away with this, doing it this way, which is better for us, which makes us, our numbers a little bit better because now Brad can actually, in the CIP, actually use the correct numbers if we need to make some modifications. And we all know that the CIP is overloaded with, with projects, not just this year, but in the next upcoming years. And if there's four or five thousand, hundred thousand dollars left over, that's probably not going to be the worst thing for our CIP budget moving forward. So whereas it's nice to get a lot of projects done, we also have a ton of projects in years two, three, four, and five in the CIP that may or may not benefit from a, from a little extra money.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Could you, do you have a list of the streets that they're going to be redone?
Yes.
I mean, you don't have to present it today, but could you put that in our packet for?
Yes, I can explain that. It's in the CIP for this upcoming year. It's Catherine and Elizabeth Court, Grove from Irving Park to the, into the northern cul-de-sac, Grove from Commercial to Center, Aspen, Potter from Pine to Spruce, Juniper from Montclair to Central, and Brookwood from Gilbert to the end of the street. So it's all, it's a small year. It's 3,000 feet of, of roadway. But that's what, that's what the, the CIP allowed for this year.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. Any other questions? No? Roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
That passes. Next items to be considered at future meetings, Elk Grove Village, Devon Avenue, March 9th, Irving Park, Wooddale Northeast Corner Landscape Plan in March, street sign purchase in March, SOQ engineering list in April, new public works building study in May, stormwater cost share to be determined, prairie light poles to be determined, and Veteran Park Memorial to be determined. Is there anything somebody would like to add to that? No? There being none, I make a motion to adjourn. Oh, I wasn't, so I was on a roll here, buddy. You know, you got to work with me.
I'm trying.
Mr. Murmice?
It's important. I just wanted to let the council know that there will be a couple of other items added for March 23rd stemming from our last TIF infrastructure workshop. You remember the wetland studies and some of the other studies accompanying that area. That'll be on March 23rd, and I'll put some information on that in tomorrow's manager's report.
Thank you. So, yeah, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Word adjourned.
Call the Finance Administration Committee to order. Let the minute taker. Note that the same people are present. I make a motion to approve the Finance Administration Committee minutes from February 9th, 2017. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next, we have a report of recommendation, fiscal year 2018 budget, and I think Mr. Wilson's going to take this one. One thing I, one thing I would like to add is, as I mentioned to you, Mr. Wilson, I want to do it the format we did the CIP in. If anybody has any questions on a page, if not, we'll just move on. And one other comment is, just a reminder to all the Alderman here, this is a fluid document, so this is possibly going to change. This doesn't mean just because we passed this today that this isn't going to change in the future. May continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, as you mentioned, that, you know, we're not going to go specifically through the book, but by and large, each slide that's presented on the screen corresponds to a tab in the book. So the information that's on the screen is summary data that's derived directly from that, the corresponding tab in the book. Go through a few high-level tabs, high-level slides, excuse me, first, which largely cover the introduction tab and financial summary tab, and then we'll get into the general fund summary. So as always, if there's questions, you know, obviously defer to the chairman, but as you said, the document's fluid, so is the conversation. Don't want anybody waiting 45 minutes to ask a question, you know, you know, if something, you know, let's get it addressed. So as in years past, we had six fund types. There they are. A couple of years ago, the Internal Service Fund, which was the SURF, was new. Previous to that, there were just the five fund types. So again, just a reminder of the different types of funds we're going to be discussing this evening. This slide, it's been up there for a while, but just a reminder, Gadsby 54, before it was just all fund balances. There were different categories. So now the, the non-spendable, by definition, is money you can't spend. It's money that's already tied up in inventories or other obligations such as salary accruals, vacation accruals, things of that nature. And then by way of hierarchy, restricted is going to be your special revenue fund, so they're restricted for a special purpose such as the motor fuel tax, it's going to be used for those things specifically specified within the state statute. Committed is items that the council has deemed important and put in certain line items assigned, is more of a staff level item. And unassigned is just that, it's in neither of the other four, and it's kind of the, for lack of a better phrase, you know, kind of the, the overall excess funding within a fund in most of the fund types. So there's 15 active funds. I say active because there's the old equipment replacement fund, the old Fund 42, that's inactive, so we didn't count that as it hasn't been budgeted for a number of years. Six of the funds have a proposed budgeted increase, nine have a proposed budget decrease. The nine, by and large, are all planned and thought-out decreases. There, there's really, with the exception of perhaps one, no structural issues. They're, you know, special projects, expanded level items, drawdowns, things of that nature. Capital spending, I know we just discussed that a little bit. Completing the Ward Two Street project, which we just talked about, Clock Tower coming up in the future, closing out, the, buttoning up the safety improvement project, water man and drainage program, the Kamed One in particular, and the stuff in Ward Two, and then the community beautification projects going on throughout town. So as we mentioned, the process, each department or fund has its own sheet, which corresponds to a tab.
Alderman Messina?
Just a quick question, could we get a copy of these slides?
They're right here?
Yeah.
May I continue?
Yeah, each department or fund has a sheet or a tab in the budget book, which corresponds to a slide. The expanded level items, as always, are green or red. There were no red, which are the manager denied ones this year. There were four recommended ones. And then, as we do with the CIP, like to gain a consensus on each section, each slide, before we move on. That way we're not bouncing back and forth a bunch, kind of do it procedurally. There are also, as in years past, the gold sheet, which is just recapping the changes made during the, this year, two-night CIP process. And this year, there's a new special blue sheet for the sanitation fund and the new garbage company rates. So coming up, we'll start with an overview of the entire budget, and then drill down through the different fund types. February 23rd, which is tonight, conveniently, is the beginning, and we'll get through as much as possible. And then March 9th, if needed, the remainder of the budget document. So big picture, excluding transfers, which has been presented this way for a number of years. You can see the FY17 budget en masse coming in, about 400,000 under budget. And then a lot of, in the revenue side, which is a reduction in multiple revenue streams, which may seem like an issue, but if you look down below, you'll see the expenditures coming in about two and a half million dollars below budget. So even though there was a decrease in revenue, there was a commensurate decrease in expenses. So it turned out okay, by and large, in all cases. And then the FY18 proposed budget, 3.25 million in revenue on all funds, and then 3.6 million expenditures on all funds. Some housekeeping matters, seen these before, I'm sure. Unless noted, personnel costs are up due to increased salaries, FICA and IMRF. The city's IMRF rate this year actually fell, which I believe is the second or third year in a row our IMRF rate fell. It's based on actuarial assumptions that IMRF does every year. So if their returns, investments do better, our rate goes down. If they do worse, it goes up. So they've been having some good years, so our IMRF rate has gone down a little bit. There's no new personnel in this year's budget, so like I said, any increase would be just based upon, you know, contracts and other contractual obligations. And then on the slides, if there's a quote-unquote "reason" for an increase or a decrease in a department, they're below the summary data. You know, if a line item changed $50 here, $50 there, didn't deem that to be a substantive reason for an increase or decrease within a particular budget category. So we didn't reference everything that changed, just anything that was significant or that we wanted to point out and draw your attention to. And as I said, ask questions as we go through the slides, so. So this is the general fund summary, which does tie out largely to the general fund summary tab in the budget book. Also, if you're looking for the pagination, it would be page 40 at the bottom of the pages as well. So currently, we're on track to end fiscal 17 with estimated surplus of just over $15,000. Budgeted surplus was about 7,500, so looking to finish the year a little bit better than we had anticipated. And there's the table there showing what the budgeted revenues and expenses were and their variance levels. And then as presented on page 44 of the budget book, fiscal 18 has a budgeted surplus of $12,578, as presented.
Okay, I guess no questions, you could move on.
So moving on to the revenues for the general fund. Taxes largely stayed flat. Taxes include property taxes, income tax, sales tax, use tax, telecom, utility, because it's just a nominal increase. License and permit fees are up almost $140,000. That's largely driven by the building permit line item. The intergovernmental, minimal change, charges for service, minimal change. Charges and service was down a little bit due to decreased impound fees. However, that was offset by the new commercial alarm fee program that the police department implemented. That's been working very well for us. Yeah, fines and fees is an increase through the tracks guard program. We estimated that to be up for half a year. We're hopeful that it'll be up for more than half a year, but to not get out of our skis too much, we estimated half a year on that. Also, on the expense side, once we get to the police department, we budgeted a half a year of expenses. So if it goes up earlier, the revenue will pick up earlier, but so will the expenses in the police department. But we had to pick a middle ground, so we went with six months for both of those line items. And then the miscellaneous is IPBC interest. About a year and a half ago, IPBC changed the way they do their investments, or picking up some more significant investment income from them. And then other operating revenues, some of the money from Irma, that Irma had been holding, we're starting to release back to us, so that's going back into the till as well, so, which is helpful.
Any questions?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Brad, the property tax, you're saying is going to be flat there. Is that any reason because of maybe the TIF district or anything? Has anything to do with that?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, so property tax revenue itself, we increased by what the county estimated to be up. I don't know if it was 1.5 percent or 1.8 percent. However, utility tax was down a little bit, and a couple of the other income tax is per capita, the state estimated that a little bit lower. So the property tax is one of the line items in the taxes line item. So while it did increase, there were a couple of other ones that decreased to offset that increase of the property taxes. So the net effect. So the net effect is virtually flat. Like I said, there was, the property taxes did go up some, but other revenues kind of held the number down a little bit.
Continue.
And so you don't believe the TIF district has heard it at all with that?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Since we had the first year's numbers, we now know roughly, at least at this point, since there wasn't significant work done up there from an EAV inflation standpoint, we were able to build in what we estimated that number to be and built that in. So this year, it's already kind of baked into that number.
We're talking later about that.
Okay. Alderman Catalata?
Yes, on the the license and permit, the, were the vehicle stickers, the late vehicle stickers included in that category?
Mr. Wilson?
Should we talk about the program that we just, we're just unsure? So that's, if you notice, the projected number, it's about twenty thousand higher than the budget number for this year. That's accounting for that. We did mark it down a little bit because, while we did have a pretty successful program with the SOS data, that did include a pretty significant amount of late fees that presupposing everybody that comes back and buys during the regular renewal program, we won't be able to capture, we won't be able to charge them late fees again if it's during the regular renewal program. So we did have to account for those late fees and and knock the number back a little bit.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I think we're ready to continue.
So the summary of expenses for the general fund. Again, the personnel, two point five-four percent increase on personnel. As I mentioned, there's no new personnel in the budget, status quo as far as headcount goes. So that would be, say, just the, you know, contractually obligated increases and, you know, the net effect they have on, you know, overtime, things like that. So nothing, nothing significant in personnel. Contractual, we did change the way that the maintenance agreements for IT are being handled. Before, they were done in various departments, various funds. So we did consolidate those into one silo this year for IT manager case to track. So instead of having them in eight different funds and line items, they were consolidated into one, which is why the contractual went up.
Alderman Messina?
Can you expound on that? Are you saying you're talking about call tickets that are coming into IT?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. No. So like the license for, just for example, like for the website.
Different software?
Yeah, the different software licenses, right? We're out of different accounts. We consolidated them into one place for for Nick to track. Because some were in his budget, some were in the police department budget, some were in Matt's budget, some were in my budget, so we put them all in his. But in doing so, the reallocation drove the contractual number up a little bit, some.
Alderman Messina, continue.
So in essence, we have central IT, which is through one person, right?
Mr. Wilson?
Correct.
Look, Alderman, E. Wesley has a question?
There is a question. So we lumped every, so we lumped everything together to IT for all the computers for each department, right? That's what I'm hearing, right? So everything's maintenance and all that's going IT. So why is it that hard, or maybe it could be done, is why isn't all the heating and air conditioning being lumped all in one, say, the building department is in charge of all the heating and air conditioning contract that it comes out of that one account? Like we just did with the IT. Therefore, we know where the air conditioning and all that, where that stands. I thought we talked about several months ago that we look at these contracts and and try to get them all in line because this building department's got a different maintenance contract, this one's got a different maintenance contract. I thought we looked at that. So now you just raise the concern is that if we could do it with IT, why can't we do that with all our maintenance agreements and give it to Public Works or the building department? And then we know exactly and say, yeah, we got this is coming out here, heating and air conditioning is coming out that account, this is coming out there. I mean, it's logic sense now that you proved that you could do it.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. So right now, from just an accounting structure, all of the, like, you know, heating and air conditioning, for example, that all comes out of one line item, and it's managed by building. So this building's managed by the building department, then the other facilities are managed by Mr. York. So to your point, though, sure, I mean, that's something that could easily be looked into and in the future going forward, yeah. To have one, I mean, yeah, we, yeah.
Call Alderman Messina, he might be able to enlighten us.
Well, no, I I would request, just like I helped with the MRO, Maintenance Repair and Operating Consolidation, I'd like to request that you guys look at these for the hardware, not the software, obviously different vendors, but hardware. Happy to take a look at those those line items because they, it's a hefty amount, and I think consolidation might be possible. I couldn't care less where, but you're talking even cartridges for printers, very basic things. I'm sure there's a ton of hardware that we could probably save on. So I don't know if this is the forum to recommend it, but if we can look at that while we have this in one spot, thanks.
Mr. Wilson?
No, I'd say just like the, the H fact thing, sure. And all the equipment siloed in another account number as well. So we have the IT agreement siloed in one, the break and fix stuff in another, and the professional services in another. So they're all siloed out now, so.
Do you have another question, Alderman E. Wesley? I'm sorry, I thought I thought he had something to add to what you were talking about, so. Everybody's good, next?
Sure. So moving on, nothing really significant in the commodities line item, capital outlay, the decrease significantly derived from the reduction in the transfer to the SURF fund, which, again, we've rolled that out to five years now and rolled that over a five-year period, so it's starting to to smooth out as we anticipated. And then increase in other is largely due to the police pension contribution, went up approximately a hundred thousand dollars this year. And then the estimated cost for the new economic incentive agreement that was passed, I believe in like November of last year.
If we have any questions, so continue.
Sure. Expanded level summary within the general fund, zero red sheets, zero green sheets. There are four green sheets in other funds, one in MFT, two in tourism, and one in SURF, but obviously, we'll get to those as we work our way through this document.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Let me go back, but I don't know if this is where we're going to discuss this personnel. You're saying there's no personnel expansion right now. This council is kind of what I got of a mix of the signs. Are we going to contract someone out to do all the signs, someone to see if our staff could do it in-house? I I just want to see where we're going with this now, because if if there's no, if we're going to do them in-house, then I guarantee you, they're going to come up to us and say they need staff, because they won't be able to mow the lawns or or something. So can we just get the sense before we could take this off the table, at least personnel, which direction we're going on this? Because I know what's going to happen.
Mr. Murman?
Yeah, we're we're not asking for any personnel, and we already built into the budget having outside laborer do the installation of the sites. It's just way more efficient that way. There's not any new staff.
So so the whole council decided to go with outside personnel to it? I just want to make sure, because I know the council was mixed on that.
Mr. Murman?
I believe Brad worked those numbers in into the budget for the CIP or?
I I'm fine then, I'm.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so Mr. York did an analysis on what they wouldn't be able to do if they did the science, to your point, from a manpower standpoint, and found it to be more efficient from getting everything done that the council wanted to get done to do that. So he gave me the number, and I baked it into the CIP, and that's actually represented on the gold sheet later on, but that is accounted for in here.
I I think he's good, so let's continue.
First department up is administration. There's the administration tab. Again, the personnel costs, nothing unique there. The contractual, so the contractual and capital outlay, they decreased as we just discussed with the consolidation of the IT items. Since IT is citywide, the IT line items left administration and went to central services, which is still within the general fund, which is where anything that's not germane to one specific department is housed, but where it's citywide and the central services. That's why those, actually, three line items are significantly decreased, is the moving of those IT costs to the central services fund.
Any questions? We may continue.
Next one is the city clerk tab, beginning on page forty-nine of the book. The only thing of note here is in the contractual services increase is largely due to the fees to the codifier. So when we pass ordinances, they go to the codifier, and depending on how many and how significant the changes are, the codifier charges us accordingly. So with the number of the, you know, code changes that's going on in community development, those are more significant, more involved, that does cost a little bit more money. So anticipating some of those larger fee ordinances coming through, we did increase the budget for the codifier this year, which is in that contractual line item.
Okay, I think everybody's okay on this, so let's continue.
Community development. In the contractual line item, there's an increase in professional services, focusing largely on permit assistance. And in speaking with CD today, they've also told me that along with the permit assistance, there's some design standards and or engineering standards that they're going to be working on as well with an outside consultant for, I believe, you know, conformity and uniformity going forward. They can explain that better than I can, though.
I have one question on this one. They're fired, in the book, fire district review services, are we not, we have zero budget, are we not using them anymore, or?
Sure, sure. So in going through the budget conversations this year, when they do the fire inspections or the safety inspections for the occupancy permits, those come, those are built into that fee, and then they're paid out of that fee. In talking through it, they're, the review fee for the fire department's built into the building permit, so we're going to begin to pay those as a pure pass-through out of there before. So it's a zero sum at the end of the day. It's just they're going to come out of the revenue as a contra-revenue expense instead of coming out of an expense. So it's it's the same money, it's just where it's accounted for.
But the fire department's still doing reviews for it?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Alderman Messina?
That's probably a question for Jeff. I'll preface by saying that this year was phenomenal as far as doing excellent work to attract more, but you mentioned now that we would be doing some contracting for consulting services around ordinances and codes and all this good stuff. I I just want to know more, because I can't speak for everybody here, but I know for me, it's, my number one priority is still to get businesses in town. And I don't know, I mean, you're the boss, Jeff, so as far as what allocation of a person's day, because we only have so many people, is spent on codes versus spent on maybe attracting businesses or something else, or working with existing businesses to keep them in town? Is that something you can speak to?
Mr. Murman?
I know I've had some long conversations with the building department about this topic, and I think community development director Cage has some ideas. Maybe you can break down some of the newer ideas.
I can do it offline. We can talk offline, yeah. Would you like, okay?
Okay. Mr. Cage, it sounds, looks like he's just dying to speak back there, so.
I know.
Yes, thank you. I think really the the key in our department is we junk, we juggle a number of projects, and there are a lot of things that are important to a lot of people, whether it's from attracting new businesses, keeping new businesses, property maintenance, and that's that's the struggle day-to-day. So I think that's kind of where the the questions and the comments are coming from. And it's a struggle that we have on a daily basis, because we want to take care of the people who are already here, residents, businesses, but we also want to attract new residents, new businesses. So it's a challenge I know Ms. Chrissy and myself have, and it's really, the contractual fees that we've put in here, for example, something that has come up in prior discussions with with management and some of the elected officials is the UDO. We know that there's some issues in the UDO. The Unified Development Ordinance has a number of engineering standards in it that are code requirements. Now, some of these discussions we've had would be to set up a reference to engineering standards that would be a separate document. So it's referencing the standards, but it's not in the UDO. Anytime you vary anything from the UDO, it's it's either a variance or a text amendment. And that's why we've been making a number of those proposals to the to the council of the committee meetings, and I think there's a better way of doing it. I mean, we've got some really good material in the UDO, there's a more efficient way of doing it. Engineering standards is an excellent example, because we can refer to it in the UDO but not have all the standards in the UDO. Pull them out, so they're not all variance requirements if someone needs some relief, put them in a separate document, which means people have to, you know, comply with them, but every time we need to modify a word or a section, we don't need to come back to the council and say, we need to modify the ordinance. So that's something I know we've talked to Mr. York about in terms of some of these, you know, driveway standards. It affects, you know, obviously, in the right-of-way width, it affects Public Works, that's that section, private property and the width, et cetera, affects, and the thickness affects community development. So, long story short, there are a number of things in there that we need to, if we make the changes, it makes us more efficient, which in turn gives us the ability to spend more times, more more of our time on a day-to-day basis on the things that are important. Now, things that are important, obviously, in the summer, permits, taking care of our current residents and businesses, property maintenance, that's a big issue as well. In the winter, that's when we kind of flip over to, okay, what are we going to do this next year for attracting retaining businesses, attracting new businesses, et cetera? So I think to sum up, let's get more efficient with some of these things that we know we can be more efficient on, spend some more time on the important things that I know that the council wants, which is retaining businesses, expanding businesses, the TIF district, and getting that, you know, the revenue and the uses in some of these businesses at a higher level. Sorry, that was not necessarily a long story short.
Mayor, please?
Ed, just hang on a second. Last, last year, didn't we hire a new position, right? So planning position, I think, and then we hired our seasonal inspector or something, right, correct?
Mr. Cage?
Yes, for example, I'm not sure if this is the position you're referring to, the seasonal for property maintenance, which was essentially for the late spring, summer, mainly dealing with long grass, sending out notices. That seems to be clearly, you know, in the spring, when it rains, you can be, you know, having to cut your grass at least, you know, every week. So we hired someone in for a seasonal position. That individual did an excellent job, got on top of it. And what was very, what was nice about it, which echoes the point you made just a minute ago, is that once they got on top of the grass issue and some of the property maintenance stuff, they started helping out with some of the filing things, some of the day-to-day things that we can, you know, pass on to that individual and free up some of our staff to do some more things, like sending out permit files for scanning, et cetera, and just making ourselves more efficient.
Continue, Mayor.
And just to follow up, we did that last year. I know it didn't happen right away, it took a little time, so hopefully now you and Ms. Chrissy will have a little more time to handle some of these other projects, because now we're full staff finally.
Yes, so to follow up with that just very briefly, it's an invaluable program. Obviously, we have our code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer has more experience, deals with more complicated code enforcement issues. The seasonal was really long grass litter, the more, the more straightforward code enforcement issues. And then that in turn allows us to be more efficient and to. And then that in turn allows us to be more efficient and to focus on some of the bigger and hopefully better projects.
Any more questions?
Any more questions? Alderman, our Wesley.
Looking at this budget right here on community development, I hope to see some big improvements in the community development due to of a seven point seven percent increase. I think we've added staff to it. I'm not happy on the development that's been happening because I haven't seen a return yet. I'm hoping to see a return within the next year. I think it needs some big improvements and I hope to see it very soon to bring in more businesses, because I don't think we're hitting every page possible to bring in more business.
Okay, I guess we can continue. Alderman, our Wesley, are you done?
For now.
Okay. Okay, let's continue.
Sure. Onto the finance department. Really, the only thing on the contractual line item, a decrease in printing and professional services. So kind of as we go through time, we've been able to get some, some better pricing from our printers and then also realizing every year as we go on, you know, right sizing some of the print jobs and actually printing less, doing more in-house, doing more electronically, and then like I said, some of the unit pricing has gone down as well, so, which is a good thing.
Okay, I don't think there's any questions, so we can continue.
Next one's legal, general labor and adjudication. This is the legal tab, page fifty-nine. Page kind of speaks for itself, I think.
Yep, I don't think any questions, you may continue. Alderman, our Wesley has a question.
I am happy that, that the legal has come down at least almost six percent there. I don't know what's going on, is it probably helping the city staff meetings and bringing down those legal costs?
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, in years past, it was really a, a strong initiative from the council to make sure we kind of keep the legal costs in check and admin has made some proactive changes to try to keep these costs in check. And this year, I think we did a really good job, obviously, almost six percent under budget, so it's not like we're going around calling the attorney every other, every other hour, so we try to be organized, have organized staff meetings and call the attorney and use the attorney only when necessary, so.
I'm happy with that, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'm looking at that, that says a decrease of five point seven three percent, but when I'm looking at whatever sheet this is, fifty-nine, okay, projected, that's for this year. All right, never mind, I answer my own question. It balances, matches.
Okay, I guess we can continue.
Sure. Onto the police department. I mean, really given the magnitude of their budget, a one point two six percent increase, I think is pretty, pretty phenomenal from the police department. Again, nothing of note in personnel. The contractual, as we mentioned, the track guard program coming back online, we did budget six months of that money. Again, that can go either way depending on when the program comes online, we had to pick a baseline. And then one of the line items that went into that IT silo was the communications line item went down by a decent amount into that IT silo, so that helped their budget line item as well. And commodities, lower fuel costs since fuel's been lower for a while, and reduction in the emergency services line item as well.
I had one question here. There's a line item in here that says, page sixty-three, it says professional services. What, what professional service is exactly what we're talking about there? It's right under emergency services, professional services, chief?
So that is, we hold monthly hearings here for a number of our programs, adjudication hearings for our track guard enforcement when that's up and running, and then also our administrative toll program on arrests, there's a fee for toes. We're actually looking at bringing some other citations in-house to that, but we have to pay monthly for the adjudicator to attend both of those hearings and the, the labor attorney, or the prosecuting attorney to attend those. So that's what that's for.
I guess we'll just want, I mean, that's great, but with the attorney, don't, don't we pay for the attorney under the legal fees or is this totally kept separate?
Yeah, so for instance, our administrative toll program, if that's, I think that's around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, we bill for that, those type, and the adjudicator that comes in, an outside person that comes in, an administrative hearing judge, we take that out of our operating budget, so, separate from the criminal prosecutions.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Messina?
So, thought I heard something, but I just want to clarify, did you say, I know we said we centralized IT, but did I hear that part of that contractual part of it is part of their IT?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, one of the items that got moved into that consolidated IT account was on page sixty-three, the communications line item. You'll notice that went down year-over-year budget about eleven thousand three hundred, so that was one of the costs that got moved into that IT silo from the police department budget.
Brad?
And just to clarify, that's the reverse nine-one-one system that we can contact residents for emergencies or community events or whatever, that, that was the, the item that got moved.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I'm just, I think I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? Alderman, E. Wesley?
I just have one question, what's the part-time employment and seasonal employment? I believe the seasonal was the lifeguards, right?
Mr. Wilson, our chief?
I can handle it. Yeah, the part-time employment is summers pool crossing guards. We receive about four thousand dollars of that back from the park district. That's based on an intergovernmental agreement between us and them. And then the, did I say part-time? That's the seasonals. The part-time is the year-round school crossing guards that we cover at all the schools, and that's something that in most municipalities, the police department is responsible for under the public safety. So we have crossing guards every day at all the schools.
So that's, that's, I mean...
Continue, Alderman, E. Wesley.
So the part-time employees is crossing guards and the school don't pay for that, we have to pay for that for them, right?
Chief?
That's correct. Actually, there was a, some interest in years past in cost sharing between municipalities and school districts. Some chose to go that route during the oh-eight, oh-nine fiscal kind of crisis, but many have just stayed with police departments handling that because it's more of a public safety function and then handling hiring under the PD and the lawful direction of traffic under the PD, so we've always kept it there. It's really not that much of a cost for the amount of, you know, the safe crossings we get out of it.
All right, and then the seasonal was a crossing guards for the pool through the park district, they pay for all, right?
Chief?
No, they pay for a portion of that, about four thousand dollars of it, I believe, based on an intergovernmental agreement. So that's something that came before this board and their board and it's, it's the agreement that was come to as far as the cost sharing on that. So they never used to pay anything towards it until a few years ago, and we were able to convince them that they should be sharing in some of that cost, but probably not a hundred percent of that cost.
So you think they should pay more than four thousand of, I mean, I mean, do we charge them for bank runs too?
Yes, we do.
And where does that fall in here?
That's on the revenue side, under intergovernmental agreements. That, that isn't in our line item budget, it's under the revenues.
Okay.
Are you okay? You're two questions over, you won.
Sorry.
That's okay. Alderman Messina?
Still intrigued by this central IT consolidation. Under capital outlay, that's the question I had, you guys have office, office equipment at four thousand dollars? So why wouldn't that fall back in Jeff, in Nick's bucket?
Chief?
This is office furniture, shelves, that type of office equipment. We don't buy software out of that generally, or all the software goes through.
Or hardware, okay.
Right, right.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Okay, let's continue.
Next one's the Board of Police and Fire Commission. Again, the numbers look pretty big on this page, but the actual dollar amounts are not. I believe last year was one of the rare years in the cycle when there was no testing required, and so this year there is a test required, I believe, for the patrol side, which is a significantly larger test and obligation than the sergeant test, which is why specifically in that other line item went up so significantly. So, but it's a, you know, statistically required mandatory testing program to create the list for hiring of new police officers.
I think we're okay, continue.
Public Works Administration, in the contractual line item, and I do apologize for not mentioning this under admin, the, kind of the general engineering services, which is, you know, the general stuff, the stuff that's not bid out through RFPs, had been housed in admin from the time that it was the inception when the city got rid of its in-house engineering staff. After the last couple of years, it's been realized that Jeff is not really utilizing the engineers that much, so it got moved to the department that is utilizing the engineers, which would be Public Works by and large. So that's fifty thousand of that fifty-one thousand dollar increase is for that general engineering increase. And then in other, slight increase in the conferences and meetings offset by a slight decrease in their miscellaneous expenses.
Any questions? Okay, guess we can continue.
The Streets Division, biggest thing is the decrease in the contractual. A large portion of that is a reduction in the brush collection contract line item, which is due to the new garbage contract that was recently approved and the agreement that was struck with Flood Brothers relative to the brush collection contract.
I just have one question here, and this is just on the performance measures. How come on page seventy-two, we had numbers for everything except for the cubic yard of waste collected for two thousand fifteen, just out of curiosity?
Sure, that was the first year that the third party did that, and so before that was all when we did it in-house, but since they're doing it outside, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions? Guess we may continue.
Vehicle maintenance.
Alderman, E. Wesley?
Can we go back to seventy-three, the stream banks, uh, oh man, stream banks, uh...
Stabilization.
Yeah, stabilization. So ten thousand dollars, is that just to look at or do the repairs too? Because I thought there was a conversation in Stormwater, I mean, about that. Go ahead.
Mr. Morris?
I can answer this real quick and easy. During the CIP discussions, we had talked about that we do budget our general amount, ongoing stream bank stabilization, but we had a larger ticket item within the CIP to look at the changes over the years. So there's a bigger ticket item, but that's housed in the CIP. This is just normal maintenance type thing.
So this...
This is not the true, this is, this is the, what we used to do, the normal number. We budget a large number in the CIP for the stream bank stabilization.
To repair it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. Let's continue.
If you just said something, I didn't hear what it was.
Thanks, Siri. Okay. Moving on to central services. Notes are on the second page, but like I said, largely this is where, so in the contractual, consolidation of the IT professional services and IT agreements. Slight increase in healthcare costs, property maintenance, work comp, that's all in the contractual line items. Commodities due to the inclusion of electric utilities, which is for the property just to the south of us. Capital outlay, again, moving the IT equipment into central services from admin, decrease in transfers due to a decrease in the transfer of SURF. And then in other, again, the police pension request and the economic incentive agreement are driving the increase in that particular category.
Any questions? Continue.
Just a quick housekeeping matter that concluded the general fund, so just so we're all aware, we're through the general fund now. So into the special revenue funds, and these are funds that can only be used for certain purposes. On the road and bridge fund, which is page eighty-one, by definition can only be used to help maintain the roads and bridges. Again, nothing really significant on this one at all. There was a slight increase in roadway repairs, a decrease in striping, sweeping, and traffic control, and then there's been downward pressure on natural gas prices recently, so the natural gas line item was reduced in this year's budget.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, on the Royal Oaks gas lights, why was it moved to the road and bridges? Where was it coming out of before?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, it's been in there as long as I can remember.
So it's always been there?
Yeah. It's as long as I can remember, yeah.
Okay. Okay, nothing else, we can continue.
Sure. Motor fuel tax, again, used.
Go ahead, continue.
There's a pretty rigid set of requirements for what this money can be used for. So the increase, there is an expanded level item for an asphalt rejuvenator, a program around that, slight increase in electrical costs. And then last year, during the budget conversations, there was discussion and direction from the DICE that wants the motor fuel tax fund built up to a certain amount for staff to identify a project to use that money for and direct the money to that project. So in going through this year's budget, is determined that next year's, not the fiscal eighteen, but the following year's road resurfacing project, which includes some FAU routes, including Central, Division Street, et cetera, since there's already a pretty significant amount of I-DOT and other paperwork involved in that to roll the, or the funding from the MFT fund into that project next year, as it'd be less burdensome to add on the paperwork for the I-DOT work to that project than it would be to any other ordinary project. So still in there this year, but we did listen and we did identify a project, it's just the fiscal nineteen project instead of a fiscal eighteen project.
Mayor, you had a question?
No, Mr. Wilson just brought it up, we're gonna go to fiscal year nineteen. They found a way to keep the money another year, that's all.
Alderman Wesley? What are we doing with the salt? We increased it another ten thousand. How much is left?
Mr. York looks like he's dying to answer some questions, so.
Love to answer questions. Salt, last week at the meeting, we gave a report on salt, and so we have about three hundred tons sitting in the barn, we have about three hundred tons that we need to So we kept it, we kept it at ninety thousand dollars, which is a flat from this year, not knowing, not being able to predict what's going on in the future. We'll just leave it at ninety thousand.
Anything further?
So do you, I mean...
Continue.
Do you think we're gonna have need ninety next year?
Mr. York?
I have, I have no idea what snowfalls we're gonna get. And, yeah, the Farmers Armory Act this year said it was going to be snowy, so we've had eighty inches of snow, fifty inches of snow, fifty-nine inches of snow, thirty inches of snow, and now twelve in the four years I've been here, so I...
All I'm, all I'm saying is watch what you order because we have no salt though.
I understand that more than anybody else does.
Mr. Morris?
We don't have a salt though?
Yeah, I would just say that we have to be, we always have to be cautious and careful. When we get a season without snow, we shouldn't jump the gun and then, you know, way under budget, because that's the next year and then we'll get the blizzard and then we'll be out of money, so we have to be careful.
So we have to be careful.
Okay, let's continue.
Yeah, so the next thing is the expanded level project that was manager recommended. The narrative is here. If there's any specific questions about it, I would have to defer to Mr. York for any details past what's written here.
I think everybody here is okay with it, so let's continue.
Moving on into the tourism fund. The significant thing, personnel costs are the dial-a-ride drivers. So that's the only item in personnel. Contractual interfund stayed the same. The other line item, the significant increase was directly derived from the two expanded level items, one for signage and one for the streetlight banner replacements, which we'll get to those. Unless there's any questions on the main light items, we'll move on to the expanded level items.
Look, I think we're, Alderman E. Wesley has a question.
That hotel tax is going to be enough to cover all that besides the Prairie Fest and all?
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, we have enough to cover everything. The reason why it's like that this year is the council had directed staff to try to accelerate the pace of all the nice new signs, and we had a fund balance. So that's just a one-time expense. So to do those expanded level items, we're just drawing down on the fund balance.
So what is, what is the estimate per year that we bring in? Is 634,000?
Mr. Murmas?
It's below that. What I'm saying is we're using fund balance to pay for these projects as we accumulated a lot over time. And we had fund balance to pay for these new projects, but we normally don't spend that amount of money each year.
So how much is left? If we did all these?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. Presupposing that everything comes to pass, the expanded level items, whatnot, the estimated ending fund balance is right around 300,000. So drawing it down, just about $200,000 this year with the expanded level items.
Alderman Messina?
I had asked this a while back, but I don't remember getting an answer, and I could be wrong. But with the dial-a-ride, I remember the discontinued service to, I think it's Elmhurst Hospital. And I'd asked somebody to look into that and seeing if there was some way we could still accommodate that, even if we had to extend hours or do something. Any information on that, or is that something we consider, can, can consider for this year? For our seniors?
Mr. York?
Due to Elmhurst Hospital moving quite a far away from Wooddale, to go there and back is probably close to an hour drive. To go, to go pick up somebody, from the time they leave the shop, to go pick up somebody, drive down there 25, 20 to 25 minutes, depending on how many trains you get caught by, get down there, drop them off, come back, you're talking at least an hour round trip. So going farther distances with only one van and one driver, it allows us less opportunities to service people that need to go to the jewel or go to their workplace of work or something. That's why we have such a, we have a small area that we travel to, so we can provide service to with only one driver and one van.
Alderman Messina?
Can we look into that? Because I know I don't, I don't own an ambulance, but I know I took somebody to that exact hospital, and I can't speed as fast as they can, and I got there in eight minutes. So I just wonder if there's a way to look at, and I don't want to break it up, but I know if I'm.
Is it Elmhurst Hospital in eight minutes without speeding?
Eight minutes, without speeding. Probably speeding a little bit, but it's an emergency.
Can the police chief look into that for us?
I would ask, I mean, can we look at something like east? I don't want to break up the city, but I just feel like we did a huge disservice to especially folks that are in condos that are right off of 80, 83. Anything in and around between Central and 83, I mean, it really is not an inconvenience to go there, because you're so close to 83, and it's one shot.
But it's an inconvenience for the people that have to go, that we have to go to Alexian Brothers and then, and then drive back and try to get somebody and take them all the way to Elmhurst and then go back to Alexian Brothers.
But if you pick somebody up off of 83, and then you drag them all the way to Alexian, that's just as big of an inconvenience to them. So I don't, I don't understand the rationale. If I live on the corner where I live, on the opposite side of town, and you drag me to Alexian Brothers, well, that's a huge inconvenience for me.
But if we're dragging you to Alexian Brothers because that's where you need to go.
Right, but our seniors need to go to Elmhurst Memorial, why wouldn't we service that? Okay, I don't care if we inconvenience, I'd rather give you guys a couple of extra dollars and take our residents to Elmhurst, or we do a pilot, and I'm not worried about inconvenience to our drivers, I'm worried about inconveniencing our residents. I'd rather pay them a few extra dollars, an hour to take them there, than to just leave all these people out in the cold and now have to reconsider their services.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, it's something we can look at. I mean, I don't think we're going to solve the issue tonight, like you said, pilot or investigate it more on times or dollars or whatever.
Yeah, that's it. Can you just do a pilot, maybe? Look into it, see if it's something we can.
We'll look into it and then bring you back some information on it.
Thanks.
Alderman Woods?
I was just going to, excuse me, piggyback in on that. I've asked for a couple of years, we've gone back and forth on this, and especially given that Addison Township has been out for a complete year now, and all that's transferred over. There's been a lot of different programs where they give people money to take a cab ride. If we could do something to make our system more robust, I don't know where it goes or what it does, I just think that we need to bump that up a little bit. And so, to your point, if we could kind of look at that and see how that is and works out. And secondly, on that is, and I've talked to a couple of people about this also, is to try to get something, whether it's the, some kind of bus running from the train station, maybe in through the industrial park, to have a round-trip link to maybe help some of those businesses attract people. That seems like if we got some deal with pace, I don't know how easy that is, if we could look into that at the same time. And maybe those two working together will help each other out.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, as I stated, we'll look into the dial-a-ride with the, you know, the hospital service, and we're already actually working on the idea about the industrial park train station, kind of commuting options for the employee base, you know, the 40,000 daytime population that we have to get around better.
And just one.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just one comment from my perspective, what Alderman Messina was saying. I live in the condos where everybody in those condos goes to Elmhurst Hospital, and I hear this all the time, like, but I understand the fire district since they moved. But I think it would be nice if we could, something with what Art's talking about and what Randy's talking about here.
Alderman Messina?
I like Alderman Woods's idea. If we don't want to spend too much time researching it, maybe it's just a general voucher, right? Something we can give them, reimbursement, take a cab, whatever. So if we don't want inconvenience people, we'll keep it simple. But we'll give you some time. Thank you.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Question for Mr. Woods here. Did you say Addison Township does not have it anymore? No, they, they, they used to run three buses. They got rid of them a year ago. So do they have? They've been out for a whole full year now. They don't have dial-a-ride either? No. So they'll, Addison now has a voucher system. If you call them and go through it, they'll give you three to five, I don't know what the dollar amount is.
Three dollars.
Like three dollars against the ride. So, you know, some, some kind of program, I think that we just need to step it up a little bit.
Alderman, E. Wesley, did you have a question too? Or? Okay. Let's continue.
So the first expanded level item was for the signage, and in terms of the signage, estimated cost to complete, so, well, let me back up a step. We, the last few years, we've been budgeting $50,000 for the signage, talking about the big entryway signs, the minor entryway signs, the wayfinding signs. Been budgeting about 50,000 per year with the council's direction to move ahead with all of the black and white signs over there and a few of the other things. Staff thought it prudent to try and see about accelerating those signs as well. Otherwise, it would take approximately four years to complete them all. So asking for an additional $150,000 to complete all of the signage. I believe there's three main entryway signs remaining, four minor ones, those 12 wayfinding signs, and then just some of the installation costs associated with those. So regardless of the decision, the 50,000 would stay in to continue the program, but looking for an additional 150 to accelerate and complete the project in one year, kind of co-terminate us with, with those signs.
Any questions? Okay, can you continue?
The next expanded level item is for the streetlight banners, which are the ones on the streetlights. As you can see in here, some are more than 20 years old. So there's six different sets, about 35 banners. So getting old, different branding, updates, things of that nature. So just looking to replace, refresh those with, you know, a combination of more modern and better branded signage for the light poles.
Any questions? Okay, let's continue.
Narcotic forfeiture fund. This fund is pretty much exclusively used for the K-9 unit. So just some nominal increases in the costs of, I say maintaining and equipping the K-9 unit, I couldn't think of a better phrase, but just, you know, vet bills, training, equipment, things of that nature for the K-9 unit.
Doesn't look like there's any questions. You may continue. Alderman E. Wesley, did you have a question?
Yeah, one question. The miscellaneous projected is 11,373 of older seven, seven heart. Why is that?
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. Defer to the chief for any more detailed questions, but on a year-to-year basis, unfortunately, the police department can't really predict what they're going to get from forfeited and seized funds, so we kind of predict some baseline of 500. And then if they have a big bust or some release of property, then.
Okay, I think we got it. Okay, that's okay. Let's continue.
Sure. Next one is the TIF district, number one. You know, this year, estimated to spend, we estimated about 80,000, which largely so far has been the TIF plan with H.R. Green. Now, the manager just referenced that a couple of the proposals that we discussed at the last meeting will be coming forward. Admittedly, the $25,000 number there is kind of for studies and, you know, whatever else might come up. Obviously, the TIF in and of itself has the $93 million budget, so I guess this is our best guess at this point, based upon what studies we had coming up. So obviously, if something happens, and there needs to be property acquisition, construction or whatnot, the money's there within the TIF budget itself. But we wanted to put forth a conservative number on the contractual side for studies and engineering work and things of that nature.
Alderman E. Wesley?
I'm sorry. Do we have anyone interested in this district at all? Any business whatsoever?
Mr. Murmas?
Yes.
Mr. E. Wesley, you want to continue?
No, we'll talk later.
Okay, I think that's all the questions. Let's continue.
General Capital Projects Fund, this was the two meetings, the CIP, the two nights that we spent talking about the projects in the CIP. You will notice on page 98 is the nice golden rod page. This is just a summary of the changes that were made from the draft of the CIP to the final product that was presented in the budget. So obviously, you know, these were the changes that were recommended at the last meeting of the CIP, a lot of the projects here were the unfunded ones. To Alderman E. Wesley's question regarding the pole and sign installation, that is under the non-transportation section, for $114,200 for the labor to install those signs. So that was wrapped into that, subsequent to that. Aside from that, there are a few projects that are going to have to come back to you, or multiple projects that are going to have to come back to the council slash committee for vetting and approval. So, but this was just a summary of the changes from the draft to the final, final product.
I have two quick questions here. Number one, in city hall improvements, we have 125,000. What are we doing at city hall? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, sure. I believe part of that was the city sign, there was some access control, I believe. Give me a moment, we can.
I think Alderman, I think Alderman E. Wesley just answered, he said the city, the sign out front, is that what it was?
That was part of it, yes.
Okay, that's fine. I just couldn't remember what was, what we had for that.
Yeah, those, yeah, okay.
And then one other question. On the page 98, we have treatment plant for Veterans Memorial. We have it under non-transportation, underwater and sewer. I'm just, why do we have it under both? Mr. Wilson?
Sure. And looking at the proposals from H.R. Green, the ones that they had prepared, was it a year, year and a half ago, I believe? There were certain line items in there that were specifically attributable to the treatment plant itself and beautification for that property. So we did segment out what would be attributable to the actual treatment plant versus the Veterans Memorial portion itself. And so since it's the treatment plant, that'll be the water fund versus the, the general fund. So that's why those are broken up.
Alderman Messina?
I think I figured it out. Just answer my question, hopefully. Clock tower, that includes the water feature and all the more recent requests that were made to that projection.
Mr. Wilson?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other que, oh, Mayor?
So everything on the gold sheet will be coming to committees at some point for discussion? Does it just to put it into the budget now, and if it happens, it happens, correct? Is that correct?
Mr. Wilson?
I don't want to give a firm yes, because if one of those seven items doesn't come back, I don't want to, you know. But anything that would need to come back to you would come back to you through the normal course of business. Like, just, for example, the first, the first item would definitely come back for the criteria and methodology behind that. You know, the first one on transportation, the streetlights, moving that increase that by $5,000, that wouldn't come back. But so anything that would, through the normal course of business, need to come back to you would come back, yes.
Right, because I was looking at specifically the first two items right off the bat.
Correct.
Okay. Before we continue, I just want to make sure, does anyone want to take a break up here? Is everyone okay?
I already asked her. She said she was fine, but that's why I'm just making sure if anybody else. Okay, let's continue. I asked her about five minutes ago.
Sure, this is the equipment replacement fund. This is the one that was replaced by SURF. So this is a dead fund, and I think it's one or two years this will roll off and won't get presented anymore, so.
Just, I was just going to ask, why do we have to keep it on there since we don't long use it? I mean, is it just because we do it for X amount of years, or?
Yeah, just from a presentation standpoint, since the trailing years still have monies in them, if we delete them, it would mess up some of the summary totals in the front, so we cannot put it in next year, I guess, if, you know, we don't want to, but it's just.
No, that's fine. I was just curious why.
To keep everything consistent, yeah, while it runs out.
Continue.
Sure. The land acquisition fund. The only thing currently budgeted in there are some property taxes for properties that the city purchased in previous fiscal years, as there's not any specifically identified land acquisitions on the horizon. There was also some money budgeted in the CIP for, specifically for Irving Park Road land acquisition, so this would be for, by and large, properties not in the TIF, not on Irving Park, so.
Doesn't look like any questions, so you can continue.
Sure. The next fund is the SURF fund, and. The next fund is the SURF fund, and so as we mentioned, the transfer from the general fund is down, but you'll see the expenses are up. That's quite a bit to do with the expanded level item of the hook lift truck, but part of the methodology behind this is that you kind of pre-fund over time the purchases, so when you get a year where it goes up three hundred thousand dollars, the money's already there for you. So, that's kind of the methodology to avoid that kind of rate shock or that spike in one-time items. One thing I would like to point out, not presented on here, but I know it's been brought up a few times, so I did want to point it out, that the proceeds from the auction items that are sold for the general fund items, or for the items, are put back into this fund specifically, because it's not presented on there, because it's on the revenue side, but the revenues from the auction proceeds the last few years have been probably better than expected, so, you know, kudos to the Public Works Department for getting those items up on public surplus and whatnot, but those are going into this fund to help supplement that program, so, so I know it's been...
Alderman R. Wesley?
Explain what a hook lift truck is.
Mr. York, looks like you want to answer that one?
I'm thinking it is a tow truck.
It's not a tow truck. We're not going to get into the tow business unless the police chief would like us to. A hook lift truck is, basically, it's a cabin chassis that has a removable box in the back, so you can put a V-box on it for salt spreading, you can put a tanker on there to put beet juice down, you can put a chipper box on it for summertime use. So, we'll purchase the cabin chassis and then the multiple boxes that will go on it, and they just kind of come and come off and on, kind of like a roll-off dumpster would do, except for it'll look a lot nicer.
So, this price that you have here, what's it include? I mean, is it just the V-box, or is it...
Yeah.
Just the box itself? Is it attachments? What attachments?
Mr. York?
Yeah. As you would notice from the request, it's a, it's a two-and-a-half-ton dump truck, like normal ones that we have. It'll have a, an anti-icing unit, a V-box, and a dump body. And the dump body, we could change the dump body out for a chipper box, if we would like, but the price, three hundred and ten thousand, is for the cabin chassis and basically three back ends.
R. Wesley, continue.
So, we don't need anything else for this thing? I mean, you're not going to, we got the, we're going to have this hook truck, and we only use the attachments for that truck, correct?
Excuse me?
The V-box or the attachments that you're buying for this truck?
Yes.
You can't put it onto another truck, because it's, we don't have another hook truck?
No.
It's only used for that truck, period?
For that truck, period, and we are purchasing this because we've got this grant opportunity from the tollway. The tollway was required to reduce their salt usage for the EPA, they were mandated to do so. They're not going to do that, and then for, in return, they're asking us to reduce also all our salt usage, which we are, and in turn, we're going to be able to receive this monetary benefit from the tollway. In the future, items, we could purchase another hook truck that would have different boxes on the back of them that will be interchangeable. So, maybe we just buy a cabin chassis hook with a V-box the next time, but we could put the anti-icing unit on the back of it, we could put the dump body on the back of it, we could put the salt, or the chipper box on the back of it. So, once you have one of these, now what you do is you purchase the next one, and then instead of buying three units, maybe you, or back ends, maybe you just buy two different back ends, maybe you buy a flatbed the next time, but now you can use a flatbed on both of the trucks, you can use the chipper body on the both of the trucks.
R. Wesley, continue.
Which, which is fine, but you got to make sure that this company's going to be around. How many companies make the lift, the hook lift? I mean, I don't know if it's a Ford product, I don't know if it's a Chevy product, it's probably another company...
Yeah, it's not, it's not a Ford or a Chevy, I mean, basically, it's an international truck, or it could be a Peterbilt, or it could be a Mack truck, whatever front end you want, and then it's made by a secondary component unit, like a Monroe, or a Henderson, or a Linco, or one of those other outfits that are secondary market, after-body, body companies. I know Monroe makes some, I know Henderson makes some, I believe Linco makes some, so there's, there's more than one outfit out there that makes them, and as long as you, as long as they can follow the specs, we use that person.
Alderman Messina?
In order to get the grant of a hundred and forty thousand, do we have to buy all those components, or can we maybe wait a year or two to pick up some of these other ones?
Mr. York?
We have put in for the money at that three hundred and ten thousand. It sounds like, and the tollway has been real wishy-washy through this whole thing, they just finally came back to us about two weeks ago and said that they're ready to move on this. We said we want to put it in the budget for next year, we tried, we asked them if we could put it in for this year. We actually put money in the budget for this current year to buy our anti-icing tank that we purchased, and some other equipment with this grant money, so it's been a little bit late in coming. Once we get this, I mean, you know, I think it's going to be a one-time shot. That's what I'm hearing, it's going to be a one-time shot, so if we're not ready to go with it, we may be, we may lose out on it. Or they may just cut us a check and say, here's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, but we have to use it for some sort of salt reduction. So, that's why the cat, the hundred and thirty-nine thousand is going for the truck, really, and the anti-icing unit, so... But to have a hook lift truck with only one back end, there's really no use for it, because you're going to have to buy those secondary ones anyway. And we can now use this truck almost twelve months out of the year, instead of using it for the winter, and then it sits for most of the summer.
That's fine. Yeah, we'll talk about it when it comes to council anyhow, so hopefully then we'll have more information on the grant by then. Cool, thanks.
Mayor?
Matt, I'll start with you, I got two, one for Matt and one for the chief.
Okay.
So, I'm going through the list here, and this Ghil six-eighty, which was bought in two thousand and five, is at sixty-two percent, and we're looking at it twenty-twenty, and then the other one, the two thousand and eight Ford F-550 mechanics truck is at sixty-seven percent, and we're buying it this year. So, is this Ghil truck, I'm not, not use that often, or what's the deal? Because it's older, it's, the percentage is lower, but we're buying the other truck first.
Mr. York?
When the replacement schedule was developed, there was a criteria that was established for each type of vehicle and a duration of time that we keep them. The Ghil is like a small end loader, so it's not a pickup truck, it's not out on the street every day. So, those types of equipment are right around fifteen years, is where we're going for a replacement for those. The trucks are right around ten years, eight to ten years. So, every year, we look at the numbers, every year, we make modifications, we push some forward, we bring some up closer to purchase date, but we look at them based upon that criteria. So, if it's fifteen years, we're going to put it at fifteen years, and when it gets to two or three years out, then we'll look at it again. But if it's fifteen years and we bought it in two thousand, if we buy something now in seventeen, and we're not going to replace it till thirty-two, we're not going to worry about it. We're just going to give Brad the number, we're going to spread it out over those fifteen years, he's going to collect the money, and then when it gets close up to that point in time, we make that decision.
All right, thank you.
Continue, Mayor.
Chief, so I'm looking at the interceptors. So, we have one, two thousand and fourteen's at seven percent, and then the two thousand and thirteen, a little lower, is at eighty-two percent. Unit number one forty-two is what I'm looking at.
I saw the same thing, Mayor, I was hit that question.
Yeah, I think that's just a typo. It's probably around the seventy percent, or something seven percent, but it's not at seven percent.
I was going to say, I was wondering why something happened to this car?
I can look it up right now.
Okay, well, and how often do we replace the SUVs?
Every three to four years, we've actually, the current year, we've, the last two years, we've actually stretched out to the end of a fiscal year to replace, and then during this current fiscal year, we're actually not going to be replacing one that was in the budget to be replaced this year. We may be coming to you in March or early April for one or two other replacements, but we're definitely replacing one less this year than we were planning on. The, these cars are a little more reliable than the Crown Vics were in the past, and the mileages aren't there, and the new scoring system is helping to kind of stretch those out a little bit and make sure we're only, we're buying them when we need to, so...
Okay, yeah, I know this has been a discussion ongoing, trying to get more life out of these cars.
Any more questions? Okay, I think we could continue.
On the next one, which is the commuter lot fund, commuter lot fund gets us into the enterprise-type funds, which are largely designed to be self-sustaining, where the revenues are supposed to sustain the expenses. Nothing very significant out of this line item. Again, there's money earmarked for help if there's a significant snowfall over there, there's money earmarked for the maintenance and upkeep of the station itself. The only real increase right now was the increase in the credit card processing fees, which is kind of good news, bad news, so...
Mayor?
Brad, I don't know, maybe I'm missing it. Do we keep a cash amount in this, in this fund? Am I missing it?
Sure. So, that's the, you know, we'll go in air quotes, the fun of enterprise accounts, is the assets are built in, it's like the value of the building, whatnot, are built into these numbers, so they're not as transparent. There is obviously a cash balance of this account, not presented on here. If you want us to add the cash amounts separate or below, we can certainly do that. We kind of built these in conformity with how the audit is built, but we can certainly add that as a separate item, if you'd like.
Mayor, continue.
And the reason I'm asking is because I know we've done the parking lot once over there, and I'm just like to see if, you know, at some point, the parking lot's going to have to be done again. I know it's not going to be done soon, but I just like to, I always like to know how much money's in the account.
I had, okay, I had just one question. On the page one-eleven, on the revenues, it seems like the parking fines have been consistent, but this year it's thirteen hundred, is that because we were short staff for a while with...
Predominantly, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Continue.
On to the sanitation fund, which is where the garbage revenue, or the revenue and expenses for the garbage contract are accounted for. As noted, the blue sheet, we need to determine what that new rate is going to be. Just to have numbers in the budget, I used last year's numbers. I am certainly not recommending that that's what we go with going forward, but just to give a baseline and some framework to the numbers, that's what we put in. We did give a couple of thoughts on the blue sheet, which is on page one-sixteen of the budget book, so certainly looking for some finite direction from the council to proceed forward with.
Alderman Woods?
I would make a motion to reduce the garbage rate by two dollars a second, and then we'll be putting the gallons in the sewer.
Mayor?
Well, right, so, we've got this discount. The goal here for tonight is to make sure we give some money back to the residents and try not to raise the water next January. But talking to Mr. Wilson, there's, you know, you got to do this transfer, that transfer. The question was, you know, for audit purposes, if we moved three dollars or something, what did you say, two dollars?
Two dollars.
Two dollars down, okay, that's two dollars, but another three dollars or three fifty or over to the sewer fixed cost, is that better for audit purposes? And I, you know, again, I'm not the accountant, I'm just, just trying to simplify it.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. From an auditing standpoint, the auditors would prefer not changing the transfers too much, so to accomplish the same functionality of helping the water fund, would probably, the recommendation would be to lower the, the rate for the garbage a little bit lower, and then increasing the fixed costs on the sewer side and the water fund. That would facilitate a change in the ordinance, but from an audit standpoint, it would be cleaner than increasing and decreasing the transfers. It's up to you, but that would be a...
Mayor?
Okay, so, just so everybody's understanding what I'm asking, and I think you just responded what was, so, the garbage would look like it's five dollars less on the bill, but the fixed cost would only change three dollars, right? That's all we're doing? Correct?
Mr. Wilson?
It's two dollars and three dollars move to the fixed cost, and that's really, so the garbage looks like it's five dollars cheaper, but technically it is, but then there's three dollars to the fixed cost. I mean, whatever everybody feels more comfortable with, it's just, just saying no...
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so, to do it that way to get to Alderman Wesley's motion...
Woods.
My apologies.
Thank you for the apology.
That's all right, I'll take it.
I'm not sure which, which Wesley's, he said two dollars, correct?
Two dollars.
So, you would then lower the garbage four dollars, and then increase the sewer fixed cost by two dollars, so you're not affected, still two dollars. It's just the one would go down four, the other would go up two, to net to, up to two dollars, if that makes sense.
If you could say that one more time.
Yeah, I think we're confused.
Slowly, as if I was a five-year-old.
Sure, so, so you want to get to two dollars? The decrease of two dollars?
Right, I want to get to reducing the existing garbage by two dollars. So, right now, it's twenty-seven or...
Twenty-seven thirty-six.
Twenty-seven thirty-six.
Twenty-seven thirty-six.
Eight sixty-four savings.
Yeah. So, you could simply reduce that by two dollars to twenty-five thirty-six, and then if you wanted to move that differential to help the water and sewer fund, you would adjust the transfer to the general fund from both the sanitation fund and the water and sewer fund by that difference. So, whatever that net spread is, you would just augment the transfers that way. From the mayor's standpoint, from the auditor's standpoint, they would prefer the transfers to stay the same, which result in lowering the garbage rate lower, but then increasing the fixed costs on the sewer side, so that your net, your net delta is still, would still be two dollars. You can do it either way.
Right.
It's, it's probably, it's easier to understand, I think, through the transfers, but from an audit standpoint, it's cleaner to do it the other way.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Kind of understand what you're saying, but what do we do for the people like Dominion, Elizabeth Park, Brookwood on the Greens, over by Peters area, too? For those people, we're raising their water rates, their sewer rate, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Wilson?
Adjusting the fixed costs on the sewer portion, yes, would, yeah, by definition, increase their water bill by two dollars.
So, is it fair to those residents?
I guess they don't have garbage.
Right. So, we're changing our garbage and...
Yeah, I mean, the building I live in, I mean, we don't, we have our own garbage company, so...
That's what I'm saying, but you're going to pay for it in sewer fees. He's saying raised at the sewer fee.
Pay for it, not every service.
Something to think about.
Something to think about.
Alderman E. Wesley.
I'm totally confused. I, the biggest concern that people are complaining about in this community is an increase in water rates. It has been the topic for every Alderman in this town. So now you're talking about lowering the garbage, I just want to make sure I'm following this right, and increasing the sewer rate, right? So where's the water rate go? Isn't it the sewer and water together?
Mr. Wilson.
Yes, they are.
So, so, I'd rather leave the garbage rate the way it is and lower that water rate and the sewer rate, because you know what?
Then the transfers change.
Well, the transfers change it. I mean, is it, is it that hard to make a transfer change?
Mr. Wilson.
Like I said, you can do it either way. It's, like I said, it's, it's, you know, I don't know, the auditors prefer it the other way, but we can certainly talk to them, they're not going to balk at it as long as we can support our position, so if it's through transfers, it's through transfers. If it's through the fixed costs, it's fixed costs. It's really the, the will and the pleasure of the council is how you go about it. Like I said, it's easier to understand, probably for the residency, if you do it through the transfer method, but it's easier for us from an audit standpoint through the, the fixed cost method.
I, I, can I carry on, please?
Yeah, one more, and then we'll, Alderman Messina, go down the line here.
All right, well, the reason I say this is because I don't think the biggest concerns out there is the water, I mean, the garbage rate. I have not had hardly no complaint about the garbage rate going up. It's the water rate that we gotta look at here, guys. And that is every, and I'll tell you one thing, if you, anyone up here is saying that they never got a complaint about water rate, then that's really good, because I'm telling you, I get it hammered every time. Water rates. One, you're gonna do water rates. We need to do something with that. We save money on the garbage, should go back to the water rates to lower those water rates.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah, for those watching at home, I mean, I think the mayor and I, we've talked about this, it's really just a shuffling of numbers.
For the audit.
For the water, right?
Audit.
What?
For the audit.
Oh, for the audit, right, right. But I meant in general, one, forget, just in general, right? And that some cities play with the sewer rate to make your water look really low. Historically, we have a very low sewer rate, even though people complain about our water rate. So it's a matter of, for me, what's the other value? And I think someone mentioned, I think it was Alderman, Roy Wesley, mentioned the idea that there's residents like Alderman Jacob and that don't pay for garbage, or excuse me, pay for garbage, and we're hitting them with that. So, I'd like to see it in the water, right? I mean, that's, so I agree with Alderman E. Wesley's proposition, I guess, to shift it out of the, see the reduction in the water rate.
Alderman Catalano, any comments? I personally would like to see it in the water rate then, too.
I think for simplistic purposes, it's just, let's go stay with the two dollars and let Brad do his inter-fund transfers, but honestly, with this cheaper rate, I know this, we asked some of these homeowner associations if they wanted to go with our garbage company, and they were kind of a no, or some were a little uncertain. Now that we've, we're getting a better rate, they may want to look at coming over to our service, and we should probably do that, but for the sake of simplistic, two dollars, we had a motion and a second just to lower it. I was, just from talking to Mr. Wilson about the audit, but I don't, you know.
Just, just, just to comment on the mayor, I, I don't believe, our condo building's never been asked if we want to switch.
There was a few condos, I said, asked, a few years ago, a couple, and I think it fell through, but now we've got a new contract, maybe we should reach out to the homeowner association, maybe they can save some money as well, and just keep it simple for tonight, so we don't talk about this for an hour.
Well, just so you know, I mean, I, I know, like, our association, I mean, we have a contract that if you break that contract, then you gotta pay for two years or whatever, but Alderman Messina.
So, real quick, just, I want to rescind my second. If it's coming out of the sewer rate, I want to rescind my second. I think I was the second on the motion.
It's coming out of the sanitation.
Of the garbage, okay, yeah, so I want to rescind that second.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, I agree.
Well, first, we get a bill once a month that's sewer, water, and garbage. The bill goes up two bucks, it goes up two bucks, doesn't matter what you added, two bucks too. If it goes down three bucks, doesn't matter what you subtracted it from, your bill went down three dollars. We can sit and argue about verbiage and semantics all evening. We did a good job up here, we went out, we, we've saved some money. I, I think the concept was to try to give that back to the residents. That was a cleaner avenue, because it really stems from the garbage. For those people that aren't getting a savings, I'm sure that they can contact. The prior vendor we had, we did go out, I know we went to a couple places in Ward Two. At that time, they weren't interested, but now that we found the, the savings that we found with this new vendor, maybe those people are interested, and I think that the vendor, at least in my talking to them, is interested in going after everybody in town, because it only makes sense. I, I think a couple of the Aldermen have talked to communities or associations in their area also, so those people can avail themselves to the same savings also. And again, the, the reason for doing it the way I did it, taking it off the garbage, is that's where the savings stem from. And I was thinking, just simplistically, that you reduce it and hold that money in retention, and next year, when we have to argue, or the next time we have to argue about the water rates, we can use that then to offset that water rate. We, we don't have to have that conversation, we're, my thought is that we're saving that money to offset that future discussion of raising the water rate. I don't know where we got into putting it in six different places.
And if we take it now, if we take it out of sanitation, out of the garbage and move it to the water, basically you're doing the reverse of what Alderman Wesley was saying. So now, you're giving more people a discount, which is going to create a different problem on the water side, and then you might have to raise the rates in January. The goal is not to raise the rates in January. So I think for simplistic, we should just...
We're shifting off, we're shifting off, we're shifting two bucks out of eight forty-five? I mean, I think, I think we're good. I think we got a good reserve.
No, no, but...
Let's shift it over, let's, we're not asking you to shift it off, but two bucks out of eight sixty-five, come on, if you're...
No, no, but it's the same, same thing. People don't have the garbage, now are getting discounts where the people that do have the garbage.
Okay, Alderman, at a time here. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, just one point, I, I've heard it a couple of times, I'm glad, but just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we're not specifically, when we're talking about the water, we're not talking about the dollar that was just passed a couple of months ago, we're talking about future increase for the next conversation that we have.
Correct.
Okay. And then, second of all, just, I know we've talked about two dollars, so we just, from staffing standpoint, we need to know, you know, do you want it two dollars off the current rates, do you want it to be twenty-five thirty-six, or two dollars?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And then, okay, got it.
I'll second it.
Yeah, could, we read the motion, and we understand it. I think there's still some people confused, including myself.
Right, so if I paraphrase, and maybe I'm, I'm thinking this wrong, and you can correct me, so, we had a savings from our existing garbage contract and our new garbage contract. Of that savings, take two dollars of that to reduce the existing, or the garbage monthly fee from twenty-seven thirty-six to twenty-five thirty-six. A difference remaining from those two dollars and the actual savings, which we don't know because of the senior discounts and all these other things, so it is a little fluid, but that's held to the side, we don't do anything with it. Then when we come to the discussion of water rates next year, or in the spring, in the fall, whenever it is, we'll have that fund to offset that. You could offset that by then again, reducing the, the garbage or applying it to the water. If one goes up two dollars and you reduce the other one by two dollars, then there was no increase, right? So at the end of the day, it's just about how much money we spend each month, spread across those street categories.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, so, I got the first half of that, so we're good on that, but the direction would be not to redirect the rest of that spread through inter-fund transfers to the water fund at this time, but just to hold it, and, okay.
Is that your motion now? Yes, that is, that is my motion.
Take two dollars.
Okay.
If I could.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
So as that builds, I mean, we have more money to offset what we know is coming. So it's like a savings account, and saying, okay, we, we know, we know, because we did the study, we know that we have to raise it, right? We know what that amount is, so this is kind of going to be there and build, we don't know exactly what the number is, because of a couple of things that are fluid in there, one of them being senior discounts, how that's going to affect the number, so this will give us a good idea after running through a year. Then at that point, if we want to have the hard discussion, because we have all the numbers in front of us, and dump it all to offset water, then, then we can. I think, I think right now to do it is premature, but to get something out there to the people, that's, that's my thought process.
Alderman Catalano.
So let's get this straight, then. So the associations, the townhomes, condos, they're not going to see any savings, correct?
Not yet.
What do you mean, not yet?
Well, that, so, if I may, so that would be correct, because they're, they're not on our system, but they certainly can avail themselves to calling that company and achieving a savings. I'm not going to stop them. I don't have the ability to negotiate for them. If they would let me do that, I'd be willing to do it, but they can certainly, and I know that you've reached out to some of them, and, and they could get that done fairly quickly. Of course, to Alderman Jacob's point, depending on what their contracts are, they might not be able to get out of them right away, or, or you might be able to enter a five-year contract with the new guy, and him offset the cost, the penalty, just like cell phone companies do, you know, bring it in, we'll pay the penalty. There's, there's many ways to do it, but...
Do we know how many, how much the savings is going to be over the course of five years?
What? Well, it depends, there is no savings if we're going to dump it all on the water, so I, I'm not sure. So right now, until we figure that out, I guess if you calculate it, when I, when I did it, and, and Brad can, over a five-year period, it would probably be somewhere plus or minus a million dollars, would, would be the total savings. Part of that we're giving back, so there really is no savings, and the other part we're putting in retention to try to offset the future increase in water rates. Does that make more sense? I mean, if, if you want to make it more now, instead of two dollars, you want to make it three dollars, I'm open to that, but this just makes more sense to do it this way.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Messina.
I don't think it's an amount thing, I just think where it's at is my only thing. I think it's pretty hefty cushion, but I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about more people benefiting. Two dollars is, in my opinion, not much, but let's stick with two bucks, but let's take it off the water so that more people can benefit. We could still stockpile the rest of the money, or save it as a cushion, but they see it there, and we all know, right? I mean, like I just sat, sat up here and said, like, it is a matter of just where it's sitting. I mean, overall, yes, it's a reduction, but all the people, unfortunately, what a lot of people sees, only see that increase, 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 increase. So, maybe it's more symbolic, that's maybe why I think we're pushing, but it's also, we've identified there's a lot of people that'll miss out if we don't move this to the water, like I'd like to propose, versus where you guys are proposing to move it to the garbage.
Right, and, let me just kind of...
Alderman Woods.
So, and I get what you're saying, I just don't see any way, because waters per thousand gallons, it's, that's a moving number, and these are set numbers. That's part of the reason that we're, over time, we're going to accumulate enough and have it in savings to offset what we're looking at the future. I can't change today, and there's no real good way to take money we don't have yet that's going to come in incrementally, and try to reduce a rate by a number, and the rates fluctuating by the number of millions of gallons we use.
But we're talking about a division problem, then. It's simply, can't we do it off the per gallon rate? I mean, yeah, we're talking about a fixed amount, but can't we just do it per gallon?
Per account.
Or, excuse me, per, yeah.
Right.
Per account.
So when, when we figured out actually how much we're getting, then probably you could do that. Right now, because of the unknowns, I mean, so right now, you could probably theoretically do a calculation, said we'll, we'll give ten cents off the water, or twenty cents off the water. It's not going to equate to a dollar.
We're talking about, like, what you're saying, off the, sorry.
Go ahead.
Off, off the account itself, I think somebody yelled out there. Maybe off the account itself, then, so that more, again, more people could benefit.
We're, I think we're trying to get too complicated, so if we, whoever's buying, whoever's paying for garbage right now is going to save two dollars. Whoever's not paying for garbage is going to save in January, when, when we don't have to raise them a dollar. Otherwise, we start taking water, money off the water, the numbers might start becoming a little more, and we might have to do a dollar, a dollar and a quarter in January, instead of doing nothing.
But...
I, I'm just, I think it's simple, those are, unfortunately, it's on the garbage. It makes, so, not everybody has garbage, so, that's...
Alderman Messina.
Question, I guess, for the mayor to answer, then, that's what your cushion is for. You guys keep talking about this cushion of, isn't that what would offset the future increases? I guess that, if you can explain that to me, then I'm done, I...
Okay.
Mayor.
So what I was saying, for the sake of audits, I was saying, put it on the fixed cost, but Alderman Wesley made a good point.
Woods.
No, 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 on, not everybody has garbage, so that makes sense. So now, if you're going to give a, let's say, two dollar on the fixed cost, all of a sudden, now, everybody has water, so that must mean there's a larger number you're gonna, the cushion's going to go away, because you're giving, just like, if by moving it over, you were going to have more people paying, now you're going to have less people paying, so now it's going to cost us. And our goal here, we're trying to make, and you know what, I was just talking to Brad, he mentioned the auditor, and I'm like, okay, well, if that makes it simpler for you, that's great, but not thinking of the other. So here, with the two dollars, the rest of the cushion's in the sanitation, then he's going to have to figure out the transfer, whatever that transfer is, and let's face it, it's going to be for one year, that'll take care of it, should take care of it. Correct, and that's, that, that was the goal, that was the whole goal, just don't raise it in Jan, what's the good, what's the use of giving everybody two dollars here, and all of a sudden, because, you know, for simplistic purposes, audit, audit their purposes, whatever, and we end up really hurting ourselves, then we got to raise them a dollar, a dollar and a quarter per thousand gallons, which is going to, anybody's, most people are having at least three thousand to five thousand gallons, so now you're really, they won't get any raise. Everybody will benefit in January, then. They won't get any raise.
I, I think that's the, is there a motion and a second, or are we just?
No, there's a motion, a second.
For two dollars.
Well, a second or rescinded, I think.
Sonny seconded.
Oh, Sonny, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sonny, you've been moved by. Alderman Wesley.
Just want to make sure the minute taker, I shouldn't say that, but she's, knows what she's doing there. Could you read what the motion is exactly?
The first original motion was just to reduce garbage rate by two dollars.
Okay, that's where we're at, right?
And that was by Woods.
Okay, thank you.
Do we all have that? Mr. Wilson, I got about a twenty-minute break there from having to talk. Yes, Mr. Wilson, continue.
No, I just wanted to make a quick point, so, two dollars, got it, good, leave the money there, got it, good.
Roll call.
I'm just...
Recap.
Recap, yeah, yeah. Just, the only thing I will say, just as a word of caution, is, you know, I know the intent is to hold the water rates, we're going to have to go back and look at it again, as we do every year, so, you know, we're, we're going to do our best... So, you know, we're going to do our best, but I don't want there to be some preconceived notion that this automatically will hold water rates, because that's not a given.
Just tell Ron Emanuel, leave us alone.
Just a word of caution, just want to, don't want everybody to have some, that it's a lock, that it's not going to go up. It's, we're going to do our best, but...
Mayor?
Right, but, you know, we might have to eat a little bit, but don't forget, we got the building coming online in June, we've got a couple of things going, so, you know, so what, if we need 25 cents, well, we can eat 25 cents for a year, if we have to.
Alderman Woods, and I think after that, we're going to do a roll call and call this a day for this topic.
And I was going to say that while it may not take the whole number away, it would certainly substantially reduce that enough that people would notice that change, and that's our intent. Does it wind up to be 100% or 90%? I don't know, like you said, we're going to have to look at that when all those numbers come in, that's why we're not doing it now. But it will benefit everybody, and it will be a huge benefit.
Okay, with that being said, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Rory Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes, that passes.
Alderman, I'm asking you to sharpen your pencil come January.
Mr. Wilson, let's continue. Brad, how long do you think?
Depends on how much you guys talk.
Okay, let's get it done.
Yeah, no, I think we can...
We're okay.
Power through.
Let's continue.
Fair enough. Next, the Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund. Again, this was part of the CIP conversation from January, February. A couple of the items, as Alderman Jacob mentioned, on the gold sheet, slight additions for the Veterans Memorial, but by and large was as presented in the CIP conversation. And we will take another look at this in the fall again, so.
Perfect. Any questions? Continue. Alderman E. Wesley? Mr. Wilson?
Sure, so, so the year ago, when the council changed the senior water discount to where the first 2,500 gallons was free, we had to give it a separate rate code, so.
Okay, let's continue. You understand?
Okay. So really, the only item of real note in here is the wastewater division, and that's largely the full realization of the debt service for the treatment plant, the 2012 bonds were already in there, but now that the treatment plant is done, the IEP A loan is fully realized in this year's budget. There's the overview of all four of the divisions within the Water Sewer Fund, and then there are breakouts of each of them on subsequent pages. So utilities, let's go to the next page. Contractuals due to the increase in alarm lines, one of the items that was changed during the dispatch consolidation changeover was the alarm lines through the company on the water facilities, so now those are being accounted for out of the appropriate division within the Water and Sewer Fund. Water commodities down a little bit due to water purchase, no known increase this year, and consumption has gone down or has been held flat, so water purchase numbers staying steady. Also, with the first round of meter replacements, getting rid of the trace units, and everybody has an Orion or an ME, we've been able to slow down the meter purchasing a little bit since we're all on current technology. We decreased the interfund transfer to the Water and Sewer Capital Projects, there was some availability there, so we took advantage of that to help again cushion the water rates, and then increase was due to depreciation, which is a non-cash item, and then increase in credit card processing fees for the utilities division.
Alderman Catalano?
The increase on the credit card fees, how come the big jump? We're looking at from 10,000 to 21,000, 2015, 2016, 21,000, on page 126.
Mr. Wilson?
So a couple of different things, I don't have the exact timing, but I know part of, wasn't Dodd-Frank, but it was a Durbin bill, where it changed the smaller ticket items, the percentages, the interchange rates, that's what hit the metro lot pretty hard. We did incur some increases on the smaller utility bills here as well, and we also changed the way the accounting was done on the credit card fees, because before, a lot of it was coming out of the general fund, which didn't make sense since they were paying the utility bills, so we broke out the accounting to more accurately reflect the purpose of the credit card transaction.
So we're not charging the residents for the fee, we're paying for the fee?
Correct.
So, so what we're looking at, if you go back to page 115 and page 126, we're talking about nearly $30,000 in fees. A lot of towns that I've called, they charge the resident a fee, so why don't we charge the resident a fee and put it into the water fund? So everybody can take advantage of it. I know it's not much, but, I mean, that's my opinion on that. It's more of a convenience fee, you know, I can't pay my bill right away, so you're getting another 30-day extension to pay it. So maybe we should look into that? I mean, it's jumping, every year it keeps it going up. I'd like to see that fee go into the, instead of us paying it out, taking it in and putting it into the water fund.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I know when I had mentioned about the automation piece way back when, when I started, I thought that was the expectation. I assumed we would charge people a dollar. I mean, it was just the norm. I mean, even just paying a ticket online, there's like a dollar fee, to your point, I mean, not only the convenience, which I'd be glad to pay a dollar, so I don't haul in here, but also the idea that I could put it on a credit card if I have to, and have more time to pay, right? So...
And plus, you're getting points too, to go on vacation.
And you're getting points, right? So there's some benefits people are realizing. No, you're right, you're absolutely right. I know it doesn't, it sounds funny, but I know people that pay their entire, all their bills on their AMX to get miles. So I would propose, can we look at just adding even a simple dollar? I think that seems to be the norm.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure, so to your point, sure. The only thing I would caution is on the Metro, the parking lot fund, which is, was what, 115 or the one you had mentioned? I'll have to look into that one, because that one just charges a dollar fifty, so I'm not sure how we would, I mean, how we would charge that one out. That one would be a little more complicated. It's a separate machine, separate system, but this one, just the point-of-sale machine wave downstairs, we can certainly look into that if there's consensus for us to look into going in that direction.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Let's do a roll call. For a dollar. One dollar convenience fee. Alderman Woods?
And then it goes into the water fund.
And this is for, like, when you pay your water bill or any other bill? Online? Okay. We're going to charge them a dollar extra.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Rory Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes, that passes.
So next year's budget, we won't see this fee in here, right? It's going to be, no, but I'm saying it's going to go into the water fund.
Mr. Wilson?
The dollar fee would go into the water fund, sure, as a revenue line item, yeah, I don't believe it's going to offset the proposed budget number, but it would certainly offset it to some extent. We can get you some numbers on the total number of transactions and things of that nature, we have all that downstairs, so. Yeah, I mean, because...
Alderman E. Wesley?
Let me go back to page 125. Laboratory services. What is that? Is that on treatment plan?
Mr. Wilson, or...
Yeah, probably refer to Mr. York. My understanding is that's...
Mr. York, Mrs. Heckler, everybody looks like they want to talk back there.
I believe that's the testing fees that we have to do.
Oh, laboratory, I thought you said laboratory services.
Mr. York?
Yeah, lab services?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do water testing every month, and in this year, we have copper and lead tests that we need to do, so that's why it's more expensive this year than it was last year, $9,000. Uh, we do. This is for the water side, this is utilities, this isn't treatment plant, this is utilities division. We lead in water samples every three years.
He's good, thank you. Okay, Mr. Wilson, let's continue.
Sure, moving on to wastewater, which is by and large the treatment plant. Personnel, again, nothing significant. Increasing contractual, again, the alarm fees, as we just mentioned, with the alarms at the wastewater facilities. Insurance, property casualty and work comp comes out of the wastewater, and some IEP A permit fees. Increasing commodities due to energy, electric costs, we received note from our consultant that the prices were going to go up a certain percentage, so we built that in based on their advice. Decrease capital, a lot of those items were moved into the Water and Sewer CIP, which is why you see a lot of the capital line items in the water fund going down to zero. Increase in the water fund transfer to SURF went up a little bit, but again, that is stabilizing over time. The other is depreciation, again, a non-cash transaction, and then increase in bond and principal interest was the fully realized PNI schedule for the 2012 bonds and the IEP A loan, low-interest loan.
Any questions? Guess we could continue.
Plant maintenance division, down 1/10th of a percent, just down largely to commodities due to continually lower fuel costs, some maintenance of buildings, they've been fixing them up through the CIP process the last few years.
Does not appear to be any questions, you can continue.
Stormwater, again, it's down about $900, slight increase in fuel and electric costs, and then the reduction in capital outlay last year, there was an expanded level item in there this year, there's not, which is why that's going back down, not expanded level, but a one-time purchase, rather, sorry.
Continue.
Police pension fund, increase in other, due to higher benefit payments, and we, just put it bluntly, have no control over those, so it's what the pension fund deems the officers are to be paid when they retire, and, you know, have a few more retirees, so the benefit payments go up, which makes sense. I did mention, though, on the revenue side, a couple of times, the actuarial valuation did show that their actuarial valuation, their request for funding was up approximately $100,000, so a few dollars less, but just for ease of math there, request went up $100,000 this year, which was built into this budget and the general fund budget.
Okay, you could continue.
Sure, the special service area funds, these right now, the only four we have active is 11, 12, 13, and 14. Curiously enough, they're all on different corners by and large of Wooddale and Thordale, and they're all debt service, there's no active construction right now, so they're all debt service funds, money in, money out. You may recall, we did refinance 12, 13, and 14 a few years ago, so we're still seeing those savings roll through, not a year and a half, two years off the PNI schedule, but again, just money in, money out for this fund at this point.
Okay, with that being said, we're done. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to pass the budget with the changes made.
Second.
Roll call, second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Rory Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes, that passes. Would like to thank all the staff that worked very hard on this, and all the staff that put all the time and energy into it. Also want to give credit to the three staff members here that did not get to talk. Albert Welcheck, Mrs. Christie, and Mrs. Heckler, thank you for being here and sitting here for, through this. Items to be considered at future meetings, there are none. Alderman Woods, would you like to add one?
Yeah, for those staff who didn't want to talk, if you guys want to get up and say a few words, you know, just, whatever, there you go, we'll accept that.
Mr. Murmas?
One other thing, let's thank the Minutetaker, this is the most difficult meeting of the year for the Minutetaker.
Yes, well, she is staff, and she's had a great part to do with this, so yes, we thank her too, of course. With that being said, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.